...unified partnership with families and community is committed to providing all students maximum opportunities to develop lifelong learners and productive citizens. Please call roll.
Mr. Goulik?
Here.
This is Good. Here. Mr. Goulik?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Harvey Laj?
Here.
Everyone, please rise. Remove your hats and say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone and thank you for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I have none at this time.
Moving on, item five, approval of the agenda. Adoption of the agenda approved adoption of the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time of the board votes unless a board member requests an item be clarified or removed from the consent agenda for separate action. All personnel approvals are contingent pending receipt of all employment materials. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Bill Goulik and seconded by Tricia Good that the Lakewood local school district board of education approves the agenda as presented. Please call roll. Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Goulik? Alright, item six, presentations. Mr. Eppenhorber?
I'd just like to give a quick recap of initiatives that we had last week. That was the boil alert that we had to enact in our school district for two days. As many of you know, on Monday last week, there was a water leak in Arbor Hills which shut down the whole system that feeds out of our way. So, for going into this complex, we're all on the boil alert. There's some things that have to take place when you have a boil alert. A lot of things have to take place within a school. Things affect food service, maintenance, and principals, what they do every day. So, I just wanted to give a little recap of what did take place or my misunderstanding that, you know, the types of things that take place. A boil alert does affect numerous daily operations of the school district. For example, food service. They can't just use tap water, you know, to cook food like they normally do. So, they had to change the menu for two days or they didn't depend on water for cooking. They boiled water for cleanup, most types of things. They also were in charge of cleaning all our ice machines that were in cafeteria and after work. They had to be drained and sanitized. So, that's just some of the things. Then, we also put the kitchens in charge of drinking water for two days. We had safe, clean drinking water here in Elementary, but that's not on the common water system. So, we trucked water in from Hebron for two days for students and staff drinking. So, that's one thing they had to do. Maintenance Department, one thing that they had to do first thing that morning was go around, you could turn off all the water fountains. And they were older ones where you couldn't turn them off. And they covered them so no access to the drinking channels. You also have to close signs about the boil alert on the drinking channels. Maintenance Department, another problem, after the leak was fixed in Arbor Hills, when they turned the water back on, we had a backflow preventer in this building that didn't operate correctly. So, we had to bring in a company to fix that first thing Monday. So, we could, you know, pressureize this building to use water for other purposes. The principals, they had a pretty good job that morning also. They had to notify staff, they had to notify parents, and notify students to make sure that they were checking all the fountains were covered. They had to make sure that they or someone in their building went to all the sinks that had operating water and post that wasn't drinkable. They had to make sure they clearly, let the students and staff understand what was going on with the water alert, boil alert. They closed signs in the front doors as in accordance with the county health department. And then again, just monitored the drinking water situation during the day to make sure that, you know, if they needed more for students and staff, they would get it. The boil alert was also posted on our website. And this is leading into something that we're looking at now as far as our future alert system. You know, if we wouldn't have a future alert system in place, you know, in the next year, things like that would be a lot easier to handle. Doesn't mean that it'd go away, but there's different things. As an example, Hebron Elementary wasn't under the boil alert. So, if we sent phone, text, or email messages out to parents, it would clearly say, you know, the building is not clear, the middle school's accident or made in high school. And it wouldn't include Hebron. They could be notified, you know, bring drinking water with you for the day or whatever. If we have, you know, a bus accident, we could notify parents of just that bus. If we had a late bus, if we could notify parents that bus 24, 26, we're late tonight, don't be alarmed. You know, if we had a two-hour emergency release or early release because of snow, you know, those messages would go out quickly. As we do those things now, most of it's by phone and by word of mouth and by radio and things like that. So, just one that, you know, we're investigating that today, might have some more than that tonight, but that's something we're looking into so that in the future, those things will be in place that, you know, will make everybody's job a little easier and be able to communicate those things easier too. That's all I have tonight. If there may be questions about that, I'll ask them for two days.
Okay, we have now Mr. Donovan O'Neal with the Central Region. He's the Central Region Liaison with the Auditor of State, Dave Yost. He has a presentation to Treasurer Glenn Placetit's office and her staff. It's the Auditor of State Award with Distinction for year 2013.
Yeah, my name's Donovan O'Neal. I'm the Regional Liaison for State Auditor, Dave Yost's office. For those of you unaware of what the State Auditor does for you, one of five statewide elected officials, Auditor Yost, Dave Yost is your current state auditor. And his job is as the Chief Accountability Officer for the state of Ohio is to go out and audit the public entities throughout the state of Ohio who would spend your hard-earned tax-paying dollars and ensure that they're being spent within accordance with the revised code and federal laws. Oftentimes, when we show up places and score the bad news, when someone wasn't spending those dollars appropriately or was misusing them or didn't do a really good job of managing the books, one of the perks of my job is I get to go out for the good news, the folks who do a really good job of managing the books and providing a good accounting of the finances within a public entity. And so, that's why I'm here tonight on behalf of Auditor of State, Dave Yost. I'd like to present this Auditor of State Award with Distinction to Treasurer Glenn Placetit, the Lakewood Local School District Treasurer. This award is given only to those entities that file a timely financial report with the Auditor of State in accordance with GAAP as well as receive a clean audit report. A clean audit report means that your financial audit cannot contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, single unfinance, or any question of costs. And now, if you can get through all of that and go beyond that to produce a comprehensive annual financial report, the gold standard in a financial accounting for governmental entities, we present you with this award with distinction. And this award is a testament to clean and accurate record-keeping, which is the foundation for good government, and I think we can agree on cost-effective education. The parents and residents of Lakewood Local School District should take pride in Treasurer Placetit and her staff for their commitment to financial accountability. Congratulations once again on receiving the Auditor of State Award and on behalf of Auditor of State, Dave Yost, we look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure clean, accountable, and efficient government for all Ohioans. Let's get Burner step around a little bit. And just to highlight again how the, what it takes to achieve this award, 5,800 public entities in the state of Ohio and more or less 5% actually qualify for this recognition. So, it really is quite an achievement for Burner's staff to be able to make this happen. We're always happy to come out and present this. And now, we have a group on here, right? Yes, we do. Alright, good.
First of all, I want to introduce my staff. This is some of the board right now, you know my staff. My Brenda Keller, Olivia Severance, and Tammy Haynes. How's it going without?
Why don't you go over here and I'll present it to you and the staff. There we go. Thank you very much. Not a problem. I hope you guys are applauding Burner's staff. No one ever applauds the State Auditor.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much. Happy to be here. Have a good evening.
Hey Glenn, we thank you for all of your work, your staff. You do a tremendous job for us and we're very appreciative of that. Kevin Pryor, Lakewood Local School District Athletic Boosters. An update from you please, sir.
Yeah. For those of you that don't know, we came in last November and we asked the board's permission to pursue putting synthetic turf in our football stadium. The board gave us permission to begin fundraising in November and we held our first meeting, it was either, I think it was the very next week. So, it was November here, we had about 50 people that showed up from all different walks of life of our community. We had athletic boosters, we had band boosters, we had people representing the youth organizations. We had just community people coming in to, you know, show their support and see how they could help us. By the time that meeting was over, our project had grown in scope. It's no longer a project about just putting synthetic turf in the stadium. It's a project about putting the synthetic turf in, putting a new set of bleachers in, renovating our bleachers, getting them up to code, making some improvements to our facilities throughout the entire stadium. It grew from a project of $660,000 to a project of $1.7 million. So, it is something that we've gone into realizing it's not a sprint, it's going to be a marathon for us to do. That being said, once we decided we were going to pursue a much larger project in scope, we had the Dan Clanton Corporation come in and give us some ideas on our bleachers. And they went through and there are some issues with our bleachers that they picked out right away. There are some code violations, some things that we're allowed to do because they were okay when we did them, but they're no longer. If you were to build a new set of bleachers, you're no longer allowed to do those items. So, you know, I have a fairly detailed account of the things that need to be improved upon when we begin to change the bleachers in the stadium. I can tell you that to date, we've been collecting money for about three and a half weeks, money and pledges. We have collected through donation and through pledge just short of $150,000 to date of the $660,000 that we need to do phase one of the project. In order for us to proceed with the turf for use next year, we would need to have the $660,000 in place either through pledges or donations or in-kind work by the first week of May. Is that going to happen? It's a possibility, but I'm saying probably not going to happen by the first week in May this year. So, the project as we look forward, we're looking forward to wrapping it through next school year and beginning installation of the turf in 2015 rather than 2014. Doesn't mean we're not going to try to get it done by '14, but I think it's more realistic to go for the '15 year. You know, we've got some large grants out there pending, through PNC Bank, the Ford Foundation, Waste Management, State Farm. I have personally written about 15 grants, which is way more than I ever want to write again. You know, some people are open to the concept of doing this with us and some people, they hear synthetic turf and automatically just, well, just football team and they close their ears. But it's really gone, you know, pretty well. We have some big projects coming up. We are partnering with The Blue Stone who is doing Country Jam and what's the other concert in August?
Woody Stock.
Woody Stock in Buckeye Lake. And they have agreed to give us signed guitars from all the acts that are there that we can raffle off in the venue during the event. Now, if you get 30,000 people in there, which they're expecting, and half of those people buy a ticket and they pay $10 for a ticket, you can do the math, it'd be a huge jump, you know, over the summer. So, we really have some things in place that I think will win us money very quickly once the summertime rolls around. As far as dealing with pledges, you know, whenever you deal with pledges over a period of time, you know, we've opened it up to the Lakewood employees to pledge money through payroll deduct. We've also opened it up for businesses to pledge over a period of time. I met yesterday with Connie Hogg at the Licking County Foundation and they are putting together a package for us that they will handle going to those businesses over the next five years and collecting that money for us, sending it to us. So then, we can, you know, pay whatever financial institution we work with, you know, to get the funding through those pledges. You know, the last thing I wanted to leave you with, we've had some pretty sizable donations. We went a couple of weeks ago to the Hebron Lions and they wrote us a check for $5,000 on the project, which I thought was remarkable because I represented about 45% of their operating budget that night, what they read to us. So, I thought that was a, quite a statement on their part, quite a statement of backing for how important the project is. The Pizza Cottage has pledged $25,000 to us. RCB Sales has pledged $50,000 to us. And just this afternoon at 3:30, the Park Foundation, Park National Bank Foundation pledged $25,000 to us. So, the donations are coming, the pledges are coming. They're not coming as fast as I would have liked them to come, but we are making headway and making progress. The one thing I like to leave people with when we talk about this project is, most of the time of booster organization, when you do a project, the size and the scope and the impact is really fairly limited. An example, we have to buy 60 new football helmets because the state said or the reconditioning company said, "You can't use those helmets anymore." It's going to cost about $12,000. So, we'll run, the boosters will run the fundraisers, we need to run to purchase those helmets. And those helmets are going to impact 60 kids over a five- or six-year period. So, maybe you're talking 300 kids to get impacted. This stadium project in comparison is gigantic. It has the potential to impact, you figure there's 2,000 kids that come through our district in a year over a 50-year period, and that's 100,000 kids. So, you know, it's worth keeping our nose to the grindstone and having everybody working with us and getting everybody in the community to go the same direction with us. And that's what we're hoping that this project does is it brings all walks of the community together so that, you know, we can create a jewel here right across the street for our kids. That's my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and that's outstanding effort to lay a real solid foundation for the future of all athletic programs here in the community. Thank you for your work in the boosters also. I know how much effort it takes to get people on board and heading in the right direction. Outstanding. Alright, we've reached public participation. This is where we ask anyone who cares to participate, stand, identify themselves, and their address, and also leave their comments to three to five minutes, please. And this evening, we have Steve Thorpe is actually on our agenda. Steve, would you like to lead us on?
Hello, I'm Steve Thorpe and I live at 2097 Ryan Road in Licking Township. Myself, my two brothers, and my two sisters graduated from Lakewood. My two daughters and one son also graduated from Lakewood. And I now have five grandsons attending Lakewood schools. And tonight, I speak for myself only. I spend many hours volunteering at football and basketball games as I feel we should have a sense of duty to our community. Two years ago, I restarted the Americanism and Government Testing as well as Buckeye Boys and Girls State Program sponsored by the American Legion. And now, Phil, I must reevaluate my commitment to Lakewood schools in regards to the number of hours spent trying to help in a small way. I feel that the school board thinks I am a danger to the students of Lakewood because of my religious views. I have attended many board meetings in the past four years and I have observed many strange happenings, starting with the fact that most school board business is done behind closed doors or on the telephone before the meetings. And that members cannot follow simple rules of ethics or bylaws such as voting for a spouse that is being hired by the school system or paying a bill of $17,000 without an itemized invoice. Over the past two years, the board has authorized paying out stipends to the employees that are now reaching close to a quarter of a million dollars. I have felt fine this action in the minutes of the board meeting, so I assume it was negotiated into the last contract. It's estimated that 70% of the employees at Lakewood live outside of the district, so that money is being spent elsewhere. Both National and Ohio School Board Association state that the school board sets educational goals and policy for the school system that the most important responsibility is to employ a superintendent and treasurer. They delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and staff. Board members are not education professionals. The board avoids administrative decisions or attempts to second-guess the administration. They do not evaluate staff other than the superintendent and treasurer, nor do they become involved in employee interviews. Other than those of the superintendent and treasurer. They must know that the reputation of the entire district is reflected in their behavior and actions. The board is not required by statute to approve extra-duty contracts regardless of whether those contracts are licensed, classified, or non-staff personnel. So, I asked, why was Ms. White on the employee interview committees? She had no standing to be involved. Eight members voted in the affirmative for Mr. Dobinmeyer with one no vote, and that one vote being Mrs. White. I also asked, who contacted the news media? Change.org, Equality Ohio? Was it the one no vote or someone that, or someone that was told about the recommendation before the rest of the community knew who was chosen? These groups knew of the recommendation on January 22nd. So, was someone placed into the committees because of a special agenda? Why did three members insert themselves into second-guessing the administrative decision? National and state associations tell them not to. They have basically told, in my opinion, Mr. Goll, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Bivard, and Mr. Coffey that they can't do their job. You also made a circus at the last school board meeting by inviting outside groups into our community. You allowed these groups to attempt bullying and intimidating the community and it didn't work. The board has shamed the schools as well as the community. You have lost the integrity to sit on the school board. And I believe that Ms. White, Ms. Good, and Mr. Goulik have displayed a total disregard for the Code of Ethics, district bylaws, as well as disrespecting members of the community and school administrators and staff. And I feel that without delay, these three members are asked and should resign from the Lakewood school board immediately.
Mr. Thorpe? I asked that any ethics violations that you feel that we have made, you can put those in writing and submit them to the board and an investigation will be done. Beyond that, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, please stand, identify yourself, give us your address.
My name is Chris Green, 9042 Somerset Road, Thornville, Ohio. I'm an alumni and also a business owner in this area. I am a combat veteran. I fought for the freedoms of the people here tonight. That includes those who recently spoke against the way I believe. I'm okay with that. I am not okay with the fact that our community allowed outsiders to come into our districts and crucify a man for his beliefs. One of the arguments presented was not making it a football thing. However, that is the job he was applying for. His record speaks for itself. I believe it should have been only about football. It seems to me, it seems to be that Lakewood has tried it with a coach from outside our community and we were not successful. That is a fact. To be a successful coach in this community, you have to understand a wide range of demographics in our school system. You have to know that many of these kids may not have a strong support system at home. These kids look up to their coach. They look to them for guidance. They look to them as a role model. I know this because I have coached many kids in this community. I have sat down with Dave three times since the last board meeting. We have wonderful conversations about football, kids, the community, and his plans to bring pride back to Lakewood football. Dave? Where are you? Dave, I would be proud to have you coach my son and I am proud to call you my friend.
Who else would like to speak? Yes?
Hi, my name is Jenny Green. I live on 9042 Somerset Road. I'm married to Chris and this is my son Zach. I have a long speech, but essentially, I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of what my husband said. I followed the story of Dave from not as our football coach quite closely. I was very disappointed to find out that at the meeting, several outside venues were here. And it seems to me that they came here to support their own agenda. I would have to ask Equality Ohio and Change.org where they were at when our school needed a levy pass, when we needed a new concession stand, we're trying to build a new football stadium. Are they promoting those things on their websites? They're not. I checked. When they crucified this man for statements made in an article in the Huffington Post or on his wires on Pass the Salt Ministries, I went there and I read those articles. I watched those interviews. I watched Channel 4. I watched Channel 6. I'm an educated person, but I'm a dingbat. I promise you, I never walked away with the message that he said, "I want to bully kids. I hate certain groups of people." And I think that those edited versions of those formats were misrepresented. And I think the school board allowed those misrepresentations to fuel their decision not to hire him as a coach. I do not know Dave. I have never met him. I've never met him before. And I'll be honest, when I saw some of the criticism, I thought maybe I had it wrong as a parent and my support for him as a coach. But I did the homework and I assure you, I'm not wrong. I'm not wrong. I need to know that when my son is putting forth 25, 30, or 40 hours a week at football practice, he has a chance to win. It's not fair. Winning is not everything, but assuring ain't fun losing either. It represents our community well when we have a program that is prideful. If we want new families to come to our school, we have to offer something to them. Our football program now is not doing it for us. I want you all to know as well, I am a devout Catholic. I graduated from a Catholic high school. My sister is a lesbian. She has a partner that she's been dedicated to for 20-plus years. I was bullied as a child, like most people. I support Dave. I want him to coach my son. I want to know that when I'm sending my son to football practice, the man that's coaching him has some kind of values, has some kind of morals, and wants the best for my child. And anybody in this room should want the same thing. I have worked since I was 15 and a half years old. I've coached kids. I've never been asked what my religion is. I've never been asked about my family. I've never been asked about their mistakes. I've never been asked about mine. If I was qualified, I got the job. That's the only discussion we should have had here. It's disappointing. It's disappointing that the board let that get off track.
All right. Here you go. At this point, we move on to the treasurer's report.
I have two items done tonight. The first one is about the bus purchases. We're gonna change up what we normally do this year. In the past, we've always advertised to receive bids ourselves, and then Michael Goethrung would pick the best bids, et cetera. Well, we are members of the MEC, and the MEC annually goes out and advertises and gives bids, and then school districts can just go through them for their bus purchases. So the resolution that's on the agenda tonight, you'll see for the bus purchases, is authorizing us to proceed and working with the MEC to purchase our two buses that we have budgeted to apply this year, and that's the only change there. The other item I wanted to comment on was the insurance opt-out program, and this is just informational stuff, but this is the third year that we have had this program in place. We put it into our negotiating agreement three years ago. The first year, of course, we had people coming opting out of our health insurance throughout the year, but by the end of the year, we had twenty-one people who were participating in this program, saving the district about ninety-seven thousand. Last year, we ended the year with twenty-seven participants, saving us about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for the year. This year, to date, we have thirty-two participants with a projected savings of about three-hundred-thousand. So this plan has worked, this program has worked, and I expect that it will continue to grow. That's all I have.
Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Come here.
There's a second. It's been moved by Tricia Good and seconded by Tim Phillips of the Lakewood Local School Board of Education, approves the treasurer's consent and agenda as presented. Please call roll. Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Cooperator?
Yes.
Mrs. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Bulley?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
And then you have a separate motion that's to advertise or receive bids for school buses, to approve authorizing cooperative advertising and receiving bids be approved for school bus chassis and bodies on behalf of the Lakewood Local Board of Education, whereas the Lakewood Local Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of two seventy-one passenger buses. Therefore, be resolved, the Lakewood Local Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize the Metropolitan Educational Council to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as per specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of two seventy-one passenger buses. Is there a motion to approve?
Send it.
Is there a second? The motion has been moved by Tim Phillips and seconded by Bill Bulley for the Lakewood Local School District Board of Education approves a bid for school buses as presented. Please call roll. Mr. Cooperator?
Yes.
Mrs. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Bulley?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Item ten, superintendent's report, Senator Janet Jennings. It's the treasurer's report.
I just got a couple items here. First, we do, we just got another packet of policies, so Policy Committee, we do need to get together here and put down two potential dates, the eighteenth or nineteenth next week at seven AM, depending on how that works out for Judy and Tim's schedule. Do you guys have a preference?
I prefer Tuesday at this point.
Tuesday?
Seven AM.
Tuesday, the eighteenth, seven AM at the central office, Policy Committee meeting. The second item, I just wanted to let the board know that we will be needing to add a high school social studies position next year. We currently have four social studies teachers. New law, I believe with Hospital one ninety-three has passed, which will require world history now. We currently offer that as an elective, but it will become a requirement for graduation with our younger students. So we will be looking to add a high school position, social studies position, and I will be posting that here soon. The third item, I'm in the process of filing another straight A grant fund. As you know, those came out from the state of Ohio. The grant I'm applying for will take care of, would take care of wireless access points throughout a high school that would prepare us to go to one-to-one education as well as district-wide IBDL services, which is distance learning. So, and that grant will total about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, so I won't be permitted to start submitting that grant until March twentieth, and then the window closes on that April third. So from the twentieth to the third, I will be submitting that grant for wireless, additional wireless access and distance learning for our district. The last item I have is this afternoon, both the House and the Senate did pass the Calamity Day law. The law basically states that you must make up four days. Anything after four days, then they will grant an additional four. So at this point, we currently miss nine days, so therefore, we will have to make up four days, which means that the student's last day will be on Thursday, June the fifth, and the last day for teachers will be Friday, June sixth. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Forrest Cooperator and seconded by Tricia Good that the Lakewood Local School Board of Education approves the superintendent's report as presented. Please call roll. Mrs. Good?
Yes.
Mr. Bulley?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Cooperator?
Yes.
Committee reports, Facility Committee, Finance Committee, Personnel Committee.
We'll be getting together on Personnel. I mean, as we start receiving retirements, and they're gonna start coming in, right now, we've already had four, and I'm suspecting another seven to ten retirements before the end of the school year. Personnel Committee, we will be getting together here as soon as these start rolling in.
Policy Committee, we've just set a meeting date, Tuesday, the eighteenth at seven AM. Technology Committee? Legislatively, we've just heard about the Calamity Days and how some of them passing that. Anything else?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of legislation out there. Unfortunately, I think there's gonna be a lot of weaseling, what I call it. They'll be trying to attach things to the mid-biennium budget, so there'll be a lot of haggling between now and the time the mid-biennium budget comes out. Who knows? Just everybody hold on. I'm sure there'll be things upon the budget table, so.
Can I change something, Jason? Your point agenda. Has there been any things to add? Old business? Is there any old business? New business? All right, Board, students' comments. Do you have comments? Make Forrest Bryce? Forrest? Bill?
No comment.
Tricia?
No comment.
Tim?
Not a comment on the students' report. We're still, am I reading this right, we're eighty-two thousand dollars a whole for year or day? Is there a...
Well, that would not include her federal subsidy payment for February, which was like almost seventy thousand.
Okay, so that's the difference, because we're way above what we were last year.
Well, they're always a month behind. Revenues are just down from last year. Because last year, we would have been the same vote, we would have been collecting February subsidy in large, so that's always gonna keep them a month behind.
That's all I have.
Mr. Etnal, for clarification on, we approved the Lakewood High School Curriculum Guide, and in there, I noted that we went from eight classes of English to four classes offered electives. Is that correct? Eight before?
Yep, because everything's, the requirements for graduation have changed, and now we go from, we went from three, high school English to four. The electives are old. When you, when they increase, when state law increases the required class of D for graduation, that takes away from the electives that we can offer, so. We have added a couple other electives without adding personnel, so we're trying to make sure that we continue to give the students choices on elective, but they're getting slimmer and slimmer as they keep adding more and more requirements, so.
I understand. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening, and in terms of community, this shows our community, we are community, and as I look out, I see many faces that I've seen doing outstanding things for this community for the last twenty-five years at least, and moving forward, that's what we're gonna do. Lakewood community is gonna continue to move forward. And I just wanted everybody to know that I'll be attending the spring conference for Ohio School Board's Spring Conference on the nineteenth, on this. LTA, if you have anything. Lace, do everyone wear lace tonight? Okay, again, we are a public participation for three to five minutes. Does anyone like to speak at this time? Please identify yourself, give us your address. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
I'm sorry.
I'll go first, Dave. I'm Jeff Corpenning, one-three-six-three-seven National Road, Thornville. I spoke at the last meeting. I want to know why, under old business, we didn't hear anything about the coach. I want to know, my son plays on the team. These young men need a coach, and I'd like to know, under old business, I'd like to specifically hear from the board members where we are on this.
I might give you another date on that, Corpenning. After the last board meeting, we reposted the position the next day, and the committee's currently in the process of interviewing candidates.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Dave Dobbinmeyer, fifty-one North Local Corner, and I speak to you tonight not as a candidate for a football job, but as a lifelong resident of the school. Just some things I'd like to make sure get on the record regarding this situation that I just think needs to be clarified. First of all, I'd like to say, Mr. Phillips and Mr. Cooper, I appreciate your support in that vote, by the way, recommendation of your administrative staff. But I think that what happened last week, I don't know, I really don't know who was at fault, but I believe that a public luncheon took place right over there in that auditorium. And I certainly wasn't prepared to have to be able to defend myself against some of the scurrilous, unproven, untrue accusations that were leveled, loved it. I tried to take it like a man, and I would apologize if my performance when I spoke over there has been emotional. Wouldn't be easy to sit there and listen to that stuff. I'd like to make a couple points. Mrs. Good, as far as I know, I have never met you. I've never met you.
Excuse me? Mr. Dobbinmeyer, in terms of public participation, according to the rules, you can address me.
Okay, this is White. Yeah, I don't think I've ever met Mrs. Good.
I understand.
I think it would have been really good for the school going to take me behind closed doors, just what I had to say, rather than to allow that luncheon to take place. In fact, go ahead, Mrs. White.
In terms of the rules, all statements should be directed toward the group's citing officer, which is me.
I'm directing them.
And no person may address or question board members individually.
Okay, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to violate that policy.
Proceed.
Thank you. So anyway, I guess this applies to all the school board members, and do you allow what happened to me last month without even hearing from them? To me, isn't even, that's not even good manners. That isn't even good manners. Now, I know that there are two executive sessions leading up to it, which are certainly a discussion, but if you knew that it was gonna be an issue, the fact that someone wouldn't bring me in and give me the opportunity to defend myself, to me, is pretty mean. Wonder is, I want to go there.
In terms of executive session, those things that are discussed in executive session are not to be shared by law.
Yes, ma'am, but I've been in education long enough to know that I could have been in that meeting and could have asked questions. I called one of the school board members and offered a cup of coffee, so I could tell my side of the story, just before the school board meeting. I wasn't given an opportunity. Mrs. White, you sat on the committee and interviewed me the first time. You tried to block the initiative. The only no vote, I believe, was from the faculty committee, and you cast the only no vote, and then run around the block. You come and sit down there and cast a second no vote against me. And in the interview process, you didn't ask me any questions about bullying, you didn't ask me any questions at all about my beliefs. You didn't ask, you had a few questions off of a prepared statement, but ma'am, you didn't, you didn't even have the decency to ask me a decent question. You could, right there in that. And those four men and you that were in that meeting selected me to be the candidate. You were the one no vote. Went to the next level. I just, the public needs to know this. It went to the next level. All the administrative team, all the administrative team selected me as the candidate.
Sir, according to the rules, you're just supposed to correct your comments.
We're taxpayers, we want to hear him speak. We want to hear him. We vote for you, we want to hear him.
He deserves to be able to talk. He can talk. Everything's according to the rules.
Now, we're worried about rules.
Where are the rules last time?
Are the rules different from the beginning of the meeting until the end of the meeting?
They focus, Dave.
Dave, we're okay.
You're with it, Dave.
If this gets out again, we'll adjourn. And we're going, this is a bullying.
Okay, I'm saying, okay, ma'am, I'm saying this entire school board, I don't know why. I believe in my heart that the decision was made for that meeting, and I have to prove that, but I believe that. And I cannot believe that you folks allowed, if you knew that I was not going to be selected as footballer, why would you permit that to take place? I wouldn't do that to my doorstep. But yet you did it. I'm not some carp that washed up on Buckeye Lake. I wonder what Frank Dobbinmeyer, Pearl Dobbinmeyer, what they think about my hand. All I tried to do was offer myself to build a football program. All I tried, fifty-two-hundred dollars, something like that. And I don't know how to say it. I wish to put my family through this, representing, 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 but you put my family through it. I'm a big guy, I can take it. My wife stood on the couch for six weeks. You understand that people have families? Understand that? I'm a member of the community. I'm a member of the community. I thank all of you who came tonight. I think the school board's probably made their decision about what direction they want to go. We have to understand this. This is White. These are the tax holders. State holders for the students. You represent them. For whatever reason, last week, last month, chose not to do that. You chose to represent Equality Ohio, change.org, don't even know me. You're listening. I got a million more things I want to say. Great school, great, great community. See Kevin Cryer trying to raise funds to build a football field on a team in twenty-ten Kevin Cryer trying to raise funds to build a football field on a team of twenty, fifteen in the last eleven years, and all I wanted to do was offer my talents to help you win some football games, put some pride into the community. And you decided to vote, you ended up. Where are they in my, where are all those equality Ohio people? We're going to put, we're going to get the session saved, sell popcorn. Volunteering time to build new stadium. Thanks.
Who next would like to speak? Anyone? Now's your opportunity.
I'll go ahead and speak. My name is Maggie Cressa, four-twelve Brown Street, gave to my dad, I am mostly attached, but Mrs. White, I would like to ask the board to reconsider their decision. You have a roomful of people asking you to reevaluate the man that everybody on the hiring committee, minus yourself, recommended and support. Now that you have had the opportunity to think about it, make your decision, you voted, now you have the reaction of the community, you see that people are unhappy with your choice. You have the chance to fix this, you can turn it around. My dad is still blaming after everything you allowed to happen to him, he's still blaming to help. He can get beyond what has been done for you guys. He can get past that, he cares about the players. He cares about this community, and he wants to see good things happen, so I beg of you, please, put your pride down. You made the wrong choice, we all think you did, you can fix it, you can change your mind. You can give this community what it's crying out for. Nobody's going to think, question why you changed your mind, it's obvious. It's obvious you should change your mind, it's obvious you should revote, it's obvious you should give him a chance. He has never done anything to disqualify him from this position. He is on the opposite path, and I know this whole room behind me agrees with me. Give him a real hiring committee, they'll pick him again. I'm sorry, Ramley, but what you need to do is vote again, and vote right, make the right choice, that you can sleep with, that you can live with knowing that you are choosing a man based on his qualifications and not his beliefs. Which, by the way, are pretty incredible, that he can stand up for them and, and get treated the way he does and not back down on his beliefs. I'm not sure that most people will do that, especially if you're going to do something more deep. And again, he said how hard it has been on my family. It has been very, very difficult on our family, and I think all of your decisions against him were super selfish, and super cowardly, and super easy for you to do. Do the hard thing, make the right choice. Come on, brother.
One-on-two-nine-Lin Shelly Road, obviously that's my sister, and, no, that's, I don't want to involve her, but I would say, I mean, schools somewhat have to run like this, I understand that, my husband and I are, we live in the community business centers. If we were going to hire somebody, the first thing we would do, sit down and talk to that person. If someone, you hire, hire people all the time, if someone came and said, I heard about this person, and they are doing this, and they're cheating on this, and they're sleeping with this, and they're bullying that, I would pull that person and say, hey, these are the rumors that we've heard about you. As far as I know, that no one did that. And this, from a business owner's perspective, that blows my mind, and that's the way that businesses conduct their operations to work. So, just, I want to thank you for your time, and, kind of second, what happened? I was in there, I'm late, a month ago, landing, I landed to hear what had happened, and just felt shitty for this community. There aren't really much to say, but, that's what my sister said, reconsider it, do what the community is asking you to do, listen to the people who live in this community. My dad drive through the streets and go out, the streets of Buckeye Lake, is down recording, get this boy out of Placewood, go on that boy, and look, look him in the eyes, say, I remember your dad, and he did this, and that, isn't that what community is? Who else are you going to find that can do that? We heard of him before, and he's a lot more eloquent than I am, so I'm not here to try to convince you, but, just trying to put a face in front of what happened last weekend. It's the same people hiding behind the anonymity of online, and you can say things about people, and I think that people did that last month without really realizing, there's a face, I've got a dog, he's a grandfather, to allow that to happen to him was just shameful, so we're just giving you the chance to make it right.
Anything different to say, other than to support at this point in time?
Do you have an eighth grade, a sixth grade, and a second grade football player here, ready to be in this room right now? Why don't you ask them what they want? That's who this is all about, am I correct? Stand there.
I support Coach D.
I support Coach D.
All right.
Third one?
Yes, Mr. Hart.
I'd like to speak if I could address the board specifically, you the president. I came here with a lot of pride, have a lot of pride for Lakewood. I came here because I wanted to take a picture of my grandson, who was chosen to represent the students and sit on the board, which I think is a wonderful program, we didn't have that. I had the privilege, and a distinct privilege, of serving the residents of this school district for two terms as a board member. And having listened to the comments in here tonight, I'd like to offer a suggestion to you, Mrs. White, and the board to consider. I think the things I heard at the end were, would you even reconsider your decision? Now, I also understand the law. You can make changes to your decision, it has to be made by one of the three people on the prevailing side if you were to amend it or rescind it. And I'm not asking you to do that, but I am asking you to consider whether or not it may be appropriate for the board to consider, and not necessarily tonight, but it could be tonight, to maybe consider going into an executive session specifically, under personnel, there's seven items you can go into specifically with personnel, but to maybe discuss whether or not there is any feeling for maybe the board reconsidering their decision. That doesn't mean you would have to change it, but having the opportunity as board members to listen to the comments of the community, I think it might be worthy of the board at least having a discussion privately about whether or not you might want to reconsider Mr. Dobbin Meyer as a candidate. I followed this issue behind the scenes, read many articles. I know Mr. Dobbin Meyer, but not on a real personal basis, but I know him. I probably knew his family more than I knew him. I think he does have sound roots in this community. I think, having served on this board and currently serve as a township trustee in Licking Township, I believe if you take religion, specific religion, or out of the picture and look at the qualifications of the individual, I think it's indisputable of his record as a coach. I think I've read in the paper where he's made commitments to this board, which I think the man has enough character, myself, that if there was any kind of issues that had created a problem for this board in the future, I think he's man enough that he would step up to it and step away from it without any kind of an argument from this board, based on the controversies that have taken place. So my comment to the board would is, I'm not telling you to do it, I'm not saying I'm overly passionate about doing it, but I'm saying that you have an option to maybe go into executive session and at least talk about whether you'd like to reconsider. If the board doesn't have any feeling for reconsiderment, and you're fixed in your, in your decision, then my comments, and I know I'm not supposed to say it to the people here, but my comments then would be to the community, to not allow a difficult issue, no matter who's sitting on that board, this was a difficult issue for that board. I've sit on, on this school board and made very difficult issues, pros and cons, it's very difficult. But I always felt, once a board made a decision for the community's benefit and for the school system's benefit, the board's decision should be supported by all, all members of the board. I don't think there's any advantage to anybody pinning the two that voted in favor against the three that voted against, I don't think there's any advantage for the community in terms of long-term interest of our system for that to take place. But I do think there was enough passion, you know, I had been told that, and I didn't go intentionally, didn't go to that particular board meeting, but I'd been told that with all the passion and all the things that went on, and all the negative comments that were said against Mr. Dobbin Meyer and his family.
Mr. Hart, would you speak?
Okay, I've been told that those comments that were made, that at the end, he got very upset, and I've been told that people, well, I think any of us would get upset if we're being challenged and our families being, and, but one of the first things he said when he stepped up here, was he apologized to this board for allowing his emotions there and comments that were made by outsiders to get him so upset, and that's one of the first things he said tonight, was he apologized. I think that it would be in this board's best interest to at least have a discussion on whether or not you'd want to reconsider it. Thank you.
Would you like to speak for three to five minutes?
Lady Ma'am, please, Jerry Thorpe, one-twenty-six Fourth Street, Ewer. I don't know if all of you guys know this, but I know that ma'am, Coach Dobbin, I really want to coach football here. I believe it was eight years ago when he first applied for the job, then got turned down, and I think he really deep down wants to coach this football here and turn his program around, and I would like for you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time?
Shelly Wallenburg, five-three-one West Brown Street, Elexington, Ohio, nineteen-ninety-seven, graduate of Placewood. I totally support the board's decision. I think you made a wonderful decision. This is a small sampling of the community. The community is going to move on regardless of the, of the decision. There's pride in the community. I come back and I donate and, not fundraise, but offer my money for fundraisers. I just wanted to say that I support the board, and those others that support the board clearly probably are not here tonight, however, I know that you represent the community, and there are others that feel the same as I do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, my name is Norm Emmett, so I don't live in the district. The only, the only answer I have to that is fundraisers don't win football games. And there's a lot of people here, excuse me, there's a lot of people here that I know are Lancers that have worked their butts off, probably like Mr. Thorpe for sixty years or whatever. Fundraisers don't win championships, okay? A great football coach, great support, pride in the community, a great weight program that goes on and on and on, wins football programs, and not fundraisers. If that was the case, every school would be undefeated. Every school would be ten-and-oh if fundraisers won games. Now, I've coached for thirty-seven years in central Ohio, and I'm looking at each of you guys, I spoke to you last time. I believe you're missing an opportunity to change this town. I've been there, I started with him in London, I started with him in London. He changed that town, just by his attitude, his patience with kids, he got kids out that never played before. He can do it, because he's that type of person. He could change this community, a community where he played, he can change. Most people that come back to their home communities are embraced, are embraced to come back and coach, especially successful coaches. And I would ask you, I would ask you, and I'm looking, I'm looking at those eighth graders back there, I'm just bumping shoulders with them, let me tell you something. Coach Dobbin Meyer gets a hold of them, look out, look out. So I appreciate you letting me speak, last time I told you to go home and look in the mirror, and I'm sure, here we are a month later, you're sitting there too. But that man that just spoke is wisdom, Mr. Thorpe is wisdom, all these people that have some part in Lancer, that is wisdom. And I would say, take that wisdom under your belt, and maybe if it's up to you and you go in executive sess- session and say, hey, we could rehire. I say to them, why would you want to come here? I say to them, why would you want to come back here after what they did to your family? Sorry for yelling. Why would he want to come back here? You know what he said? Same reason I wanted to come here, for the kids, for Lancers, and to work with these kids, not for fifty-seven hundred dollars. That's why he wants to be here. Any coach out there in central Ohio would be laughing at him. Why would you want to come to Lakewood? And that's what he said. I said, Coach, why do you want to go back there? When you go home tonight, you take off your shirt, and you look in the mirror, and you shave or brush your teeth, remember those three kids back there? See those three kids? I don't even know who they are. That's who you got to remember. Thanks, Mrs. White.
I have a process question.
All right.
If this Dave's still a candidate for the job, because you're going through a process to hire now, if he becomes a candidate, and you would select him again, could you select him again?
I think the process is such, Mr. Dobbin Meyer's an advocate, and we interviewed again, and he was the, he was the candidate that, that was recommended, and it would be brought to the board for, for a vote.
All right. At this point in time, I'm not hearing anything different other than support for Mr. Dobbin Meyer. Our next regular scheduled meeting date will be April ninth, two thousand fourteen, at six-thirty PM, here in the Lakewood High School Library. At this point in time, we're adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to say, I didn't think you should agree to this. However, executive session, I think you may agree to this.
Mrs. White, for clarification, is he being reconsidered for the position? Yes or no?
Well, that wouldn't happen unless we went into executive session, and then spoke about it again, and came to an agreement that that would be something that we would all agree to.
Okay, so, from my understanding, you may choose to meet again behind the public eye, to reconsider him, to become a candidate, to interview again, and go through the process again, so-
As we would with any candidate.
Okay, so there is a chance that he's being reconsidered for the decision.
As we would with any candidate. I see a hand.
Why can't you vote now?
Because we're not in executive session at this point in time.
Have you heard all this, you can't vote?
We're not in executive session for discussion, we're in a board meeting. There's been a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
It's been moved by Forrest Cooper, I'd second it, called by Joe Dooley, the Lakewood Local School District Board of Education, adjourned as the time indicated. Please call roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.